We're good? Great. Awesome. Thank you, everybody, for the patience this evening. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 25th, 2017, Gardner, Kansas Planning Commission meeting. I'll call everybody to order. Please rise and state the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now move into roll call, starting on my right.
Brady here.
Roberts here.
Mater here.
Freeman here.
Austin here.
Corvus present. Consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If a separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any item any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Brady with a second by Freeman that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on, regular agenda item number one. Plum Creek Manor 2, PP-17-05. Consider a preliminary plat for Plum Creek Manor 2 located north of West 183rd and Mulberry Streets. Harold Phelps applicant for Wash Coleman FFBWC Investors LLC, property owner of record. Do we have a presentation this evening?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Lanniger, Principal Planner. This is the property we're looking at tonight. As you can see, it is just north of West 183rd Street and east of Center Street, just south of the new elementary and middle school. It's kind of a leftover hole in the middle of the neighborhood, and what the applicant is looking to do is complete this subdivision. This is previously preliminary platted as part of Plum Creek Manor, and having to renew the approval is what we're looking at tonight, more or less. Staff findings with the development, the preliminary development, preliminary plat, sorry. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's in compliance with the requirements of the land development code, with the exception of the sidewalk requirement requiring five feet. I'll talk about that in a little bit. It does not deter any existing or future development on adjacent property, and it does not impede the construction of anticipated or future public infrastructure in the area. Additionally, I just wanted to mention that it does meet the standard for the requirement for open and civic space is within the service area of Veterans Park and Grand Star Elementary. This is the overall preliminary plat. You'll notice that on this page of it, there is a tract B that is way up into the northeast. This is a piece of property that was kind of added in. It was left over from when the school was developed. There is a few pieces of kind of orphaned property where these, thanks, where these streets kind of dead-end into the school property. They're looking to platter as a tract B. There will be a cul-de-sac developed for public right-of-way to allow for a turnaround at the end of Cypress Street, and then the rest of the property will be owned and maintained by the Homes Association. The rest of the property is in that kind of hole in the middle of the subdivision. We'll get in closer here to the main part of it. This allows for the connection of Mulberry, Magnolia, Cherry, and Cypress Streets, which is very necessary. You'll see if you look on some of the aerials that there's trails kind of marked in there where people have walked and such, so this would be excellent for connecting and the infill development. They also provide a pedestrian connectivity or tract A at the Mulberry Street where it turns. This is a piece of, or a connection that the city had requested for future pedestrian connectivity to the property of the south, which is owned by the city. That's where we currently have a water tower. There's been talk of developing some of that other property as potentially a park. On the plat, it does note that this property is the same as tract B to be owned and maintained by the Homes Association. Staff had just requested that note be changed for tract A to be dedicated to the city, so the city could maintain and develop that, or at least maintain that tract for connectivity. I did mention previously about them not meeting the requirement for five-foot sidewalks in the air, in the development. The code does allow for the ability for the city engineer, the director, and/or the planning commission to allow for modification for specific context for street layouts. The surrounding property has four-foot sidewalks, so to have sidewalks go from four-foot, five-foot to four-foot, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. So the city engineer, the director has said, you know what, for continuity reasons, we'll just continue with the four-foot since it is infill, and otherwise it makes it a little more difficult. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Plum Creek Manor 2 with the following condition, that tract A be identified as dedicated to the city for future access.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Is the applicant with us this evening? Anything to add? Please state your name and address for the public record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Harold Phelps, Phelps Engineering, 1270 North Winchester, Olathe. We are here representing, I am representing Rousch Coleman this evening. We have several representatives from Rousch Coleman here that can answer any specific questions about the plan. But as Michelle stated very well, this is kind of an infill. We're kind of completing the project. The street layout is very similar to what was originally planned. We're making those connections. We would appreciate the waiver for the four-foot sidewalks. It's not a big deal, but it does stay consistent within the subdivision. With that, to keep it short, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have staff and the applicant. Any questions or comments?
My only question was that on the preliminary plat, there's a tract A in gray, and, which I assume is a part of a different plat. And then there's the new tract A that's in bold. I assume we want the...
Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. The tract A in gray is actually a different plat. That's the detention tract in the previous plat. So we can even either name it a different tract, the walkway, or get that cleared up in the final plat. Be happy to do that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? What? I would entertain a motion on item number one.
After review of application PP-17-05, a preliminary plat for Plum Creek Manor 2, property ID CF221425-2003, and preliminary plat dated July 14th, 2017, and staff report dated July 25th, 2017, the planning commission approves the application provided the following condition is met, item one, and the project notes identify tract A as dedicated to the city for future access.
Second.
We have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Austin that after review of application PP-17-05, a preliminary plat for Plum Creek Manor 2, property ID CF221425-2003, and preliminary plat dated July 14th, 2017, and staff report dated July 25th, 2017, the planning commission approves the application provided the following condition is met, item number one, in the project notes, identify tract A as dedicated to the city for future access. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Item number two on the regular agenda, comprehensive plan amendment. Hold a public hearing and consider a text amendment to the Gardner Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the capital improvement element, CIE, to the comprehensive plan. Presentation this evening.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Gonzalo Garcia. I'm the Utilities Director. On June 27th, 2017, the planning commission initiated an amendment to add a capital improvement element, known as CIE, to the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan. The CIE is a longer-term plan and addresses projects that are considered essential to maintain existing survey levels and anticipate in new capacity requirements associated with population growth, development, annexation, and other master plans. Last year, the City of Gardner hired the services of EDA Engineers, Surveyors, Planners Incorporated to develop the CIE for the City of Gardner. This evening, we have Oneelia Lazari. She's with EDA. Ms. Lazari has an extensive public sector planning experience, including supervision of the City of Gainesville's comprehensive planning efforts, 2010 to 2015. She's a member of the American Planning Association and the American Institute of Certified Planners. She joined EDA in 2015 as a senior planner to provide additional extra planning services to the firm. So we have a presentation regarding the CIE.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you in Kansas. I came all the way from Florida today, so I can tell you that it's just as warm in Gardner as it is in Florida. It has been a pleasure to work with the staff members of Gardner, particularly Gonz Garcia. He has just been very instrumental in providing the documents that were needed to us. Kelly Woodward has also been great on the planning side, and Scott Gary from Recreation, and Tim Mackel Downey, and Michael Kramer from Public Works. So without their assistance, I would not be here tonight with you. And of course, I'd like to thank Cheryl Harrison Lee for giving us this opportunity with the City of Gardner. Capital improvements element that's being added this evening is a very strong planning tool for Gardner. It connects the vision that is in the comprehensive plan with the very practical questions of what improvements are necessary for growth and development in the community, how much will those projected capital improvements cost, and when will those be needed, so that the governing body, the city council, can know what ties the vision with what they need to budget for in the future. We've summarized the needed improvements and costs to support growth and development for electric, parks and recreation, potable water, wastewater, and transportation. And this was based on, again, some master plan updates that have been done, the original master plans, and assistance, again, from the staff. The capital improvements element, and I believe that you have received a copy of this document in your packets, is, includes those projects and facilities that are related to capacity enhancements to maintain existing levels of service and to expand those levels as growth occurs. And what I like to explain is that the capital improvements element doesn't include every City of Gardner capital improvement. For example, if your city hall needed a new roof on it, that would not be in the capital improvements element, because that's a maintenance type of issue. Resurfacing the roads also, that doesn't really add capacity. These are items that are very specifically related to your comprehensive plan and to your growth and development efforts. The projects are greater than $50,000 in cost, and they may require multi-year financing simply because of the size and scope of the projects. The document that we provided this evening includes, at the very back of it, some tables, and these are five-year, 10-year, and 10-year-plus schedules of capital improvements. So we look at the very near term as it ties to your capital improvements programming efforts in Gardner, and then look at the longer term, where things may shift because of changing technologies or new needs, but we at least have a planning tool to show us what future budgeting we may need to do. Costs are shown for each project in the fiscal year in which they are anticipated, and they are based on the projected needs from the five-year capital improvement program, the master plans, and the updated master plans. And the City of Gardner, in the past few months, has gone through some extensive updates of master plans for the potable water system, the wastewater system, and there's a very large transportation planning effort that I believe is still ongoing. In addition, there were population projections that were provided by another firm, and these are updates. And this was very important, because some of the previous projections were perhaps too optimistic, and the world changed back in 2007 and 2008 with the recession, and I think we're now looking at a more realistic picture with these updates. And I will say that the basis of all the projections was using these population projections, and I believe you received that document last month in your packets. Moving on, I'm just going to summarize as briefly as I can the capital improvements by project type. The electric, again, was updated thanks to Mr. Garcia providing information, because that was an older master plan, and it was quite dated. The primary facility needs are new generation capacity, and this will be accomplished by ownership buying in in the Dogwood Energy Facility. Substation 3 interconnection with Westar, and then overhead power line project 123 for system integrity. Parks and Recreation, the latest master plan for this particular facility was 2009, so Scott Gary with the Recreation Department did provide me with some much more recent information. However, in the 2009 document, there was a level of service standard set, and that was 12 acres of parkland per 1,000 population. So using the updated population projections for up to 2040, there will be a need for 99 additional acres of parkland. So that's included in the planning process. Parks, open space element, recommended acquisition of parkland and installation of facility, identifying funding sources, which is part of what we're doing tonight, budget for acquisition and construction of Greenway, and subdivision regulations that require dedicated open spaces. And I believe that those have been accomplished. In addition, there was a recommendation back in 2009 to require subdivisions to provide sidewalks, and that has also happened. The five-year schedule includes a land acquisition project for the St. John's Trace Neighborhood Park and park development for that park. The 10-year schedule includes more park acquisition, land acquisition for Kill Creek Trail, the regional sports tourism and training complex, a community center, and a natatorium, which I learned is a swimming pool. I didn't know that until I looked it up. Coyle Meadows Park, a dome and amphitheater, and Greenway and bike trail planned. The potable water plan is very up-to-date. The master plan was updated in May of this year, and it indicates that there are a large number of water system components that are nearing capacity to meet the maximum day demands, and also that the system lacks redundancy to maintain operation under a large emergency event. The Hillsdale Water Treatment Plant and raw water intake capacity should be upgraded to meet the maximum day demand, and that is reflected in the five-year schedule. There are projects for system redundancy, the West Madison and North Moonlight Road loop feeds, the capacity enhancement with 1 million gallons per day, I believe, connection to Water 1, and then a 10-year and 10-plus year schedules include capacity upgrades to meet future demand, and that would be based on population growth, which may occur as a result of annexations. And I know that annexation is something that the city is interested in, and I will tell you that we also looked at another document called the Growth Management Strategy, which I believe this body probably has taken a look at, to include those issues within this capital improvements element. Wastewater, again, a very much updated, up-to-date plan of May of this year. It anticipates the growth areas annexation. It evaluates the existing treatment plant capacity and improvements needed to meet future total nitrogen and phosphorus discharges, and it recommends projects that are short-term and longer-term. So the five-year is the shorter term, and then 10 and 10-plus year. And then it recommended monitoring growth and development patterns, which is something that I will be recommending also at the end of the capital improvements element. So the projects that are included are 17, and I won't list all of those. You have them in the tables, but in general, there are lift station improvements, force main improvements, water wastewater treatment, gravity interceptors and clarifier projects, parallel relief lines, and the Kill Creek blowers and BDP belt press. As I was driving into Gardner this evening, I noticed some transportation projects that I had been speaking with the Public Works Department about, so it's nice to see those are ongoing, but they will be, I think, for some time, so they're included in the five-year schedule and the 10-year and 10-year-plus schedules. The master plan is being updated, 2017. It's in draft form, the last that I was notified, and it updates the 2010 master plan. The project list was based on the immediacy of congestion, safety, connectivity needs, and long-term growth expectations. So the five-year schedule includes several projects. Gardner Road interchange improvement, Santa Fe Street from Waverly to Poplar, improve it to a three-lane section for traffic flow, Moonlight Madison traffic signals to maintain traffic flow, Waverly Road reconstruct as a three-lane street again to enhance capacity, and then Moonlight Road, I-35 to Buffalo Trail, add turn lines to improve traffic flow. In summary, the capital improvements element is a very strong planning tool for you. It summarizes the forecasted needs, costs, and dates for capital improvements to support new growth and development in your community. We've dealt with electric, parks and recreation, transportation, potable water, and wastewater. One of the recommendations that is in the element is that you do this as an annual process, updating those, the five-year schedule and those other schedules, so that you can have a better picture annually of what you've accomplished and what needs to be accomplished as conditions change. And the recommendation would be that you do that as part of the capital improvement project planning process that the city council does. Finally, there are two recommendations that we worked with staff, and these are up for you, and I'm going to turn it back over to Gonz. And again, it's been a very great pleasure. Everyone has been so nice here, and your community is lovely and wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have any questions?
We'll probably have some questions, but this is a public hearing item, so we'll go through the motion first and then open it up to the Commissioners for questions.
Thank you, Madam.
Appreciate you being here. So with that, let's do the formality of this as a public hearing item. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Individuals will be limited to three minutes, and those speaking as a group will have five Not seeing anybody come forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Brady with a second by Austin that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed with all in favor. Okay. Does staff have something else for us before we go into discussion?
They have two recommendations. The first one is to adopt a resolution to amend the Gardner Comprehensive Plan to include a new Chapter 12, capital improvement elements, element, and forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body. And the second is to initiate a comprehensive plan amendments to incorporate the updated information from the recent master plans and studies and to further strengthen the implementation plan.
Great. Thank you very much, Gonz. All right, guys, questions, comments? We've got staff. We had a fantastic presentation this evening.
Only question I had was on the five-year schedule of capital improvements under potable water, the 1 million gallon a day connection to Water 1. Should that be 5.4 million or 54 million?
The connection, you're talking about the amount?
Yeah.
Or the actual dollar amount?
The dollar amount in the table under 2018.
Thank you for pointing that out. There is a typo. It should be 5,400,000,000. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll make that correction.
Do we need to do anything to recognize that, or does that just get picked up before it's presented? Governing body.
Yeah, as corrected. Okay. You have any questions? Sorry, I'm good. Tim?
No.
Okay. All right, well, there's no questions. I don't have any. I would entertain a motion on this item. I see we've got two. If I'm understanding this correct, there's two separate recommended motions?
Right.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion on this item. We already did. Okay.
I move to adopt Resolution 17-01 to amend the Gardner Comprehensive Plan to include a new Chapter 12, capital improvements element, and forward recommendation to the governing body.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Brady that we have a motion to adopt Resolution 17-01 to amend the Gardner Comprehensive Plan to include a new Chapter 12, capital improvements element, and forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body, and I believe, as we all talked, it's going to be as corrected for the one typo. So with that motion on the table, I will take a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor.
I move to initiate comprehensive plan amendments to incorporate the updated information from recent master plans and studies and to further strengthen the implementation plan.
Second.
We have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Austin. The motion made to initiate comprehensive plan amendments to incorporate the updated information from recent master plans and studies and to further strengthen the implementation plan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thank you, guys, very much this evening. Okay. Moving down, item 3A. Land Development Code text amendments. Item A is TA-17-05. Item A is TA-16-10. We're going to hold a public hearing and consider text amendments to various chapters regarding the addition of the utility building and infrastructure use category. We have a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Michelle Cricks, planning with City of Gardner. And this evening, I'm discussing text amendment case 1610, which is an amendment to the Gardner Land Development Code pertaining to public utility uses and aviation facilities. Currently, the Gardner Land Development Code does not address either of these uses, and staff is proposing the following information to guide development in the future. To help keep the proposed amendments just straight, I'm going to discuss first the public utility facilities, and then I'm going to move on to aviation facilities. And in regards to the public utility facilities, the proposed text amendment has not changed since we discussed it last month at the June 25, 2017 Planning Commission meeting with exception to the fencing materials requirements. So just to refresh ourselves, we're proposing to amend Section 17.05.020, which is the general zoning standards allowed in public utility facilities... Excuse me. Allowing public utility facilities and transportation facilities multiple principal buildings on-site. Amending Section 17.05.030, which is the permitted use table to include major and minor public utility facilities as either permitted or conditionally allowed in residential and non-residential districts subject to specific standards, limitations, and performance criteria. Okay, so we're unamending Section 17.05.030, description of uses to include a description of both a minor public utility facility and a major public utility facility. As noted in the staff report, a minor public utility facility is more locally scaled facility for electricity, water, or other utilities, which can also include limited office, where permitted in Table 5.2. A major public utility facility is proposed to be a larger scaled facility and geared to be more regionally based, servicing multiple communities. A major public utility facility may also include general office or large office use, where allowed in Table 5.2. Next, amending Section 17.05.050, the specific use standards for public utilities. Some additional standards for this use include: requiring a minimum setback of 50 feet from residentially zoned property; allowing public utility facilities to exceed the maximum height, provided additional setback from property lines to minimize visual impact; adding a buffering requirement, which is provided in Gardner Municipal Code 17.08.030B; and allowing the option for fence, provided certain standards are met, such as allowing a fence around the entire perimeter of the site; a minimum fence height of six feet; and the use of approved materials, such as the use of wrought iron or aluminum simulating wrought iron adjacent to the public right-of-way. Staff considered the Planning Commission's concerns regarding the fencing materials for public utility facilities adjacent to residential districts. And after continued consideration, staff has adjusted the fencing requirement that went adjacent to residential. And staff is now proposing that the fencing adjacent to residential can be any other of the materials that is provided within the Gardner Municipal Code, Section 17.08.040B. But they also need to match the architecture of the surrounding structures, which is already provided in that section of the code. And then specific materials are prohibited, such as razor wire and barbed wire. So the next topic that we're going to talk about this evening is aviation facilities. And really, this is being really specific to the Gardner Municipal Airport. The current... When the new code was adopted last fall, aviation facilities were not included into that. So staff has been charged to add not only the aviation facilities as a permitted use, but also set standards under the Form Based Code. So aviation facilities are proposed to be approved with the issuance of a conditional use permit in the agricultural district only, as noted in 5.2, which is actually consistent with the previous zoning code for Gardner. A description for aviation facilities is proposed to include any land or water designated, set aside, or used for the landing and takeoff for aircraft, including facilities for the housing and maintenance of aircraft and accessory activities. This definition is consistent with other municipalities in the area and with the professional planning organization that they've worked up for aviation facilities. Due to the unique nature of aviation facilities, staff is proposing additional specific use standards in the Gardner Municipal Code 17.05.050. First, aviation facilities are to be constructed in accordance with the existing airport master plan and the airport layout plan, which was approved by the Federal Aviation Authority. This statement is to ensure the airport complies with the airport master plan, which is an approved document by the FAA. Next, staff is proposing that only those buildings designed to store and maintain aircraft be exempt from transparency requirements, primary feature requirements, and building ornamentation requirements. Other buildings needed for gatherings or flight schools would require these features if a certain building type is proposed. And although this will be addressed later in my presentation, currently, the agricultural district only allows two buildings permitted. And staff will be proposing another building requirement or another building type within the ag district that actually addresses these concerns. Next for consideration is street design, frontage design, and landscape design. The city engineer, director of business and economic development, or the planning commission have the option to modify typical street cross-sections to include an exemption to the street tree requirement in designated zones defined in the FAA-approved airport layout plan of the Gardner Airport Master Plan. Additionally, aviation facilities are to be required to comply with frontage and design requirements, but may be exempt from frontage tree requirements in those designated zones defined in the FAA-approved airport layout plan. Staff recognizes the importance of keeping those areas clear of obstructions, such as trees, so height doesn't impact the takeoff and landing areas or attract birds, which could affect aircraft. The same consideration was given when addressing landscape design for parking lot trees and open space trees, and exempting trees in those areas which could impact takeoff and landing of aircraft or impact operations of the airport. Regarding parking, staff is proposing one space to be provided per enclosed aircraft space. The Gardner Airport also includes opened aircraft tie-downs, which are not proposed to be considered for parking requirements. Currently, the parking count is approximately a half parking space per enclosed aircraft space. Therefore, if the need for more parking is necessary, they will have the ability to expand. But also, don't forget that the Gardner Municipal Code does provide standards to exceed the parking requirements if needed. Regarding above-ground storage tanks, it is staff's opinion to address them to ensure that they are allowed for the airport. Currently, the Gardner Airport has two above-ground storage tanks. Both are adjacent to 175th Street. And staff is proposing the following standards for the above-ground storage tanks. One tank per lot, or one tank for every 50 acres. Currently, the Gardner Airport is divided into two lots with a tank on each lot. The smallest lot is less than one acre, and currently, the city has a long-term ground lease. So incorporating that lot into the larger is not anticipated for the near future. The larger lot is over 120 acres and also has a tank on it. So the proposed language is to allow a lot less... A lot less than 50 acres to one tank. If that lot is over 50 acres, they may incrementally increase the number of above-ground storage tanks for every 50 acres. Above-ground storage tanks are not permitted in the front yard setback. Above-ground storage tanks are not to exceed 1,000 gallons. And above-ground storage tanks must comply with screening requirements outlined in the Gardner Municipal Code, Section 17.08.050. Lighting for aviation facilities must also comply with the Gardner Municipal Code, Section 17.08.050, unless otherwise required by FAA. This is to ensure certain lighting, such as elevated lights or rotated beacon lights, which may be required by the FAA, will be allowed. And the final standard proposed by staff states that in the event of conflict between the Gardner Municipal Code, Section 17.05.050 CC requirements and a specific federal regulation or standard, the more restrictive shall apply, or the Gardner Land Development Code shall be applied to the greatest extent allowed under the conflicting federal requirement. We've included this statement to ensure that if there is a conflict between FAA regulations and the Gardner Municipal Code, that we can find common ground to make sure it works, that we're complying with the FAA, that we're trying to meet the standard under the Gardner Municipal Code to the best that we can, but also be able to fall under the standards of the FAA. As I previously stated in my presentation, staff is proposing to include a new non-residential building type for the agricultural district, which is the general industrial building type. Currently, only two building types are permitted in the AG district, which is the detached residential estate building type and a small civic building. Including the general industrial building type is to provide more flexibility to the airport for alternative building types. In the staff report, I have noted in three sections where it's called. I noted it as a runway protection zone in the proposed standards. After consultation with legal, staff is requesting that the planning commission change the language from the runway protection zone to designated zones defined in the FAA-approved layout plan outlined in the Gardner Airport Master Plan. So you look at the screen. The runway protection, or the protected area where we're talking about not being exempt from trees would be on the plan. 175th Street is in red with the arrows. And right along that area in yellow is actually a designated takeoff zone and landing zone. And that's where we want to keep the trees out of so we don't impact aircraft. However, legally, we need to change that from a runway protection zone because there's a lot of definitions regarding the runway protection zone to designated zones defined in the FAA-approved airport layout plan. Staff recommends the planning commission approve case TA-16-10. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Real quick, this is a public hearing item. So we'll now open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allowed to three minutes. Those representing a group are allowed to five minutes. Not seeing anyone come forward to speak on this item, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Brady with a second by Austin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Okay. Questions, comments for staff on this item?
I've got a question for staff. So frankly, the odds of someone coming and building a new airport are very, very small. So what we're doing is codifying things in a way for if we make enhancements to the current airport, which the city owns. My wondering is if all these new pieces are in place, and we do make any improvements, the bathroom facility. I know a lot of times when you make any improvements, that triggers the entire complex has to be in compliance with code at this point. So if we do go in, the lighting changes, the tank storages. Are we making this much more expensive project to tackle some of the smaller pieces in order to maintain the airport? That's my thought there. If we do one, does that automatically mean everything has to be within compliance, which means we can't tackle it piecemeal like we might need to do in regards to the restroom facilities, if they ever decide to do playgrounding, other things again? So that's my immediate concern, is if we're making it harder for ourselves to enhance and maintain the airport that the city owns.
You may get a multiple answer here, but we'll start with the building code side of things.
Okay.
We currently... Whenever we have existing facilities, be they city or private, the improvement sections that you're referring to, and I'm assuming you're maybe referring mostly to ADA, but all code requirements, we tie the actual updating of the code requirements to the facility that's being improved.
Okay.
So, for example, we had one hangar out there that had bad wiring. This is prior to the city actually taking it over. And so when we went out and investigated, we did all the hangars. And we wrote our report based on the needs for all the hangars. But the only hangar that we required them to improve was the one that had the wiring issue. So we may make notations, and we may bring to the fore code issues.
Right.
Not necessarily violations, because some things were... As long as they're useful, they're basically grandfathered until they break. And at the point that they're no longer useful or came to be used or repaired, then they have to be approved to the current code.
Okay.
Specifically to the restrooms, our current issue with the restrooms is basically the same problem anybody has with a 50-plus-year-old septic tank system. And that is the septic tank field itself is just filled up with material and is not functionable anymore.
No, and that part I understand. It's just as soon as we work on the bathroom, is that going to trigger all these other pieces to the plan? So it sounds as though that won't be the case.
At this point, no. The answer is no.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions, Brad?
Along those same lines, kind of triggered a thought that I was debating whether to ask. So from a parking perspective, if our new requirement is one parking space per enclosed aircraft space, and they currently have one parking space per two enclosed aircraft spaces, does the next person to build a hangar have to add twice the parking that they currently have out there? Or do they only have to add one spot because they're only building one hangar?
The configuration of our hangars are currently... They're linear.
Right.
And when you build a hangar in this context, we're building basically 10 per unit, five per side. So it wouldn't be one parking space. It would be the number of parking spaces required for a hangar of that size. So we would have to incorporate additional parking to handle that many more hangar spaces. That being said, we do have one individual hangar that's out there that's privately owned on leased property, which is the experimental hangar from the local aviation people. And they have more than adequate parking. They have like six spaces for that particular hangar. So I think, in order to answer your question, there wouldn't be a hangar built So I think in order to answer your question, there wouldn't be a hangar built without a parking requirement that the city would have to find space for. Does that help?
Yes.
It'd be a city building, so the city parking would have to be taken into account at the same time.
Do you know if the one-to-one ratio is currently met with the number of hangars and other available parking spots? I don't know the number out there.
It's approximately, so there's 98 enclosed hangars.
Okay.
And there's approximately .5 parking spaces, so it's about 47 parking spaces. There are two paved parking areas, and then there's a gravel lot where that parking area count is more of an approximation, taking into account the standard size of a parking area plus a driveline. So that's why I'm saying more of approximately, just because there's not striped out there. So it's an approximation on that. So there's about 47 parking, available parking.
So that's right to Brad's point. If we built a 10-unit hangar, would we have to add 55 parking spots? Or we'd only have to do the 10 for the new 10? Okay.
Also, it might behoove you to know that we allow, when someone takes their plane out of their hangar, if they have a car, they can park a car in the hangar while they're out. So if they're gone for a long time, we actually have parking space for that particular car in the hangar itself.
No other questions on the left side? Anybody on the right? Tori, your turn?
Nope. Good.
Okay. We don't have any other questions or comments from staff. I entertain a motion on this item, and please note that we do have a requested text change that needs to be called out in the motion as is made.
A move that we recommend that the governing body approve TA-16-10, a text amendment pertaining to the addition of public utility facilities uses, airport facilities and associated standards as presented in the July 25, 2017 staff report with the following changes. Change runway protection zone to be designated zones defined in the FAA-approved airport layout plan outlined in the Gardner Airport Master Plan.
Second?
With a motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman, that the planning commission recommends that the governing body approve TA-16-10, a text amendment pertaining to the addition of a public utility facility uses, airport facilities, and associated standards as presented in the July 25, 2017 staff report with the noted change of runway protection zones changed to designated zones defined in the FAA-approved airport layout plan outlined in the Gardner Airport Master Plan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thanks for the hard work on that one, guys. Item 3B, TA-16-12, reconsider a text amendment to Section 17.05-040, accessory uses of the land development code regarding massage businesses as accessory home occupations. PC recommended approval on 12/20/16, remanded back by the governing body on 5/15/17. We have a presentation this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kelly Drake-Woodward, Chief Planner. So we're revisiting this text amendment, which you first initiated in October last year. You held a public hearing in December of last year, there were no public comments. And at the time, staff recommended approval, which meant that massage establishments would be prohibited as home occupations. The planning commission recommended denial, which means massage establishments would not be prohibited. Okay? And so, you know, we've been collecting amendments to go together to counsel, that's why this just went to the governing body in May. So they had some discussion at their meeting and have returned your recommendation of denial for reconsideration, not because they disagree with you necessarily, they're just, some other things came up, and the city attorney suggested there could be some other options for you to consider. So your choices tonight would be to resubmit the original recommendation with your reasons behind that, or to submit new or amended recommendation. So just to share with you a little bit about what they talked about, I think you do have the minutes, but just to highlight that there were members of the governing body that expressed support for massage establishments as home occupations, and definitely for treating this occupation consistently and fairly with other similar occupations, and without undue stigma for a particular home occupation. The police chief did point out that there is a unique context of this occupation, and that it does involve some state of undress. So then that kind of turned into a discussion about the need to update training requirements and other things that are actually in the licensing requirements in a different section in the municipal code than the land development code. So that is why we worked with the city attorney to offer you some more information on what other communities do. So just starting out with a summary of that research, we found that there are three communities that we looked at that specifically permit massage establishments as a home occupation, and those are Lenexa, Miriam, and Overland Park. Their language is very similar, but I think the language from Overland Park was probably the most comprehensive and clear, because it does clarify that the therapist has to be licensed, the home has to be licensed as a massage establishment, and meet all the municipal code requirements for that licensing. And the massage establishment also has to meet the home occupation standards that are in their unified development ordinance, which is same as our land development code. And also, they do clarify that the home occupation is subject to the inspection provisions of the municipal code that pertain to massage businesses. And that kind of addresses the city attorney's concern about a special right of privacy in the home, and you know, we do allow that massage establishments can be inspected at reasonable hours, and so I think that's why they specify that in Overland Park, that those licensing requirements do apply to your home if you choose to do a business in your home of this nature. There was one city that we think probably permits it, sometimes it's very unclear whether they do or don't. But in Prairie Village, it seems to mean that if the therapist is licensed, that they can perform the services elsewhere. So presumably, if that other designated place meets the definition of a home occupation, then those home occupation standards would also apply. And that's how I'm interpreting it, and the city attorney felt that they do allow them as home occupations. Specifically prohibited as a home occupation in Leewood and Spring Hill. So they do not allow massage as a home occupation, and it's very, the language is very clear. You can't operate from a private residence or even a non-commercial business establishment. And then there are five, or four, I guess, including Gardner, where we think it's indirectly Gardner, it's an opinion of our city attorney that because of the definition of massage establishment in the municipal code, that does not contemplate a massage establishment as a home occupation, because it defines it as a place of business. So to me, that's not real clear, but that's what we're going with here. Olafah, their provision basically prohibits anybody from sleeping overnight at a massage therapy establishment, and since obviously in a home, you sleep there overnight, and it doesn't exempt owners of massage establishments that are in a home indirectly, that would say you can't really have a massage establishment in your home. Ottawa calls them adult businesses, and they don't allow those in residential districts. Most communities call it, classify that use as a personal service, a personal improvement service, a wellness center, something like that. Shawnee, it's just kind of a convoluted combination of provisions in the two different codes that basically ends up as not allowing massage establishments in residential districts, so therefore they probably can't be accessory to a home in a residential district. So that's your, basically your additional research. We feel that you have some, there are options to allow massage establishments as a home occupation in Gardner. I think through your discussion that we've realized that you couldn't really come up with any conditions that you could think of that would make them have external impacts that we haven't really addressed in the land development code. But you may need to revise the Gardner Municipal Code licensing requirements to clarify where and under what conditions licensed massage therapists can operate, and where and under what conditions licensed massage establishments can operate. Because as I discussed, it's not really clear right now that you could actually do that. Even if you guys want to allow them possibly as home occupations, if they meet the land development code standards, our other standards in the municipal code may not allow that. So basically, here is our recommendation that you, after consideration, you either resubmit your original recommendation with the reasons behind the decision, or submit new and amended recommendations. The recommended motion is reiterating your original recommendation, denying the text amendment to prohibit massage businesses and similar uses as home occupations, which would have the effect of possibly allowing them if they meet our conditions. And then the reasons that you would do that, all the language is written out here, but basically what you'd be saying is that the land development code does not need to be amended to address the issue of massage establishments as home occupations, that the standards in the land development code are sufficient to address the anticipated impacts. Number two, any other specific impacts should be addressed in the licensing provisions of the municipal code pertaining specifically to massage therapy, and that's under the authority of the governing body to address those. And that, the other reason is that with clarification, massage businesses could then be permitted as home occupations consistently with other similar uses.
Great, thanks, Kelly. Now this is not a public hearing item, however, if there's anybody that would like to comment on this item, I will give you a quick minute if you'd like to make a comment. I know we had the public hearing back in December, nobody showed up to speak, so I will allow a quick comment. Please state your name and address for the public record. And be heard.
My name's Greg Chapman. Address is 1199 East Santa Fe, Gardner, Kansas. I wasn't aware that we were actually changing the codes back in December. The reason that I guess we're reviewing all of this is I read what, I read the code that had been presented back in December, and it was, it was kind of insulting to massage therapists. So I worked with the chief of police and the code enforcement officer, and so we kind of got the ball rolling on kind of amending the code to get out from adult entertainment, and then possibly looking at this home business side of it as well. I was hoping to work with the city, I guess I didn't know what I needed to do to present, I guess, or to work with you guys to kind of make a recommendation for you. I think that the recommendation is great. The only thing I would like you guys to consider as well is I believe Overland Park or Lenexa offers the therapist to travel to somebody's home, so it's not necessarily that the therapist would like them to come to their house, it's that the therapist travels to the person's house. This is my main mode of massage, because a lot of my clients aren't, they're not able to leave their homes, or it's a lot of effort for them to try to come to a facility. So I guess that would be the other thing that I would add, is to kind of keep that in consideration, and I think that's probably more, therapists like to have a shop in their house, but a lot of them would prefer to travel to people's houses, not necessarily just have one at their house. The other thing I wanted to ask, and I don't know if this is appropriate to ask here, was the codes that I had kind of worked with, with the police commissioner, or the police, whatever, and the code enforcement lady, I don't know where those stand, so I don't know how to get a copy of those, or where, if those have even been discussed. Because I think a lot of that, like the wording for adult entertainment, all that kind of stuff, has that been changed, do you know?
I wouldn't know. I'll look to staff to answer that question.
I was just going to clarify that those provisions are in the other section of the municipal code, not the one that you guys are addressing, but the other section.
Okay.
And they have not been addressed, but we have to take it in two steps, this being the first step so that the city council can take action off their recommendation. Based on the city council action, then we'll know what to prime it forward with as far as additional changes to the code.
Awesome. I really appreciate you guys looking at this, I really, really do. When I read the codes, I was just, this is my hometown, and it was really disappointing going through school knowing I could never have a massage establishment in my hometown and help the people that I care about the most because of the adult entertainment portion, because of the no-at-home business stuff, all of that. So I really appreciate you guys considering that and really taking into consideration us. I would just add again that the provision of being able to go to somebody's house, I believe Lenexa or Overland Park requires a doctor's note to be able to do that. So whether it's a chiropractor or medical doctor, as long as the patient or client has a doctor's note stating that the therapist can come work on them, then usually the city, or those two cities allowed it, but they had to follow by the, you still had to obviously claim it, you still had to write down the person's name, address, all of that like you do at a regular establishment. So it was all the same rules, it was just with a doctor's note, you could travel to the person's home. So thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for the comment. Anybody else who'd like to briefly comment? Okay.
Larry?
Oh, Larry would like to comment. Thank you, Larry.
As a follow-up to his last statement, we currently already allow any massage therapist who's licensed in the city to go to a person's house upon the description he used, which was chiropractor, kinesiologist, a physical therapist, or medical doctor. If they've recommended that, then we already allow that to occur under our current.
Okay, so it's already currently, great.
It's under the city code 5.15.170 restrictions of business premises, which should be in here.
Yeah, okay. Great. This one was a pretty thick staff report, so thanks for the clarification, pointing that out. Oh, I just said, thanks for pointing that out. It was a very well thorough staff report. We don't have other quick interjections from staff, let's discuss this, and we'll just start now to the left. Brad, you have questions?
I guess so. The way I understand all of this, we're considering whether or not to add massage businesses to the prohibited list for home occupations. Whether massage therapists can travel to other people's homes falls under the other section of the Gardner Municipal Code, which falls to the governing body.
Correct.
Okay, and then is there, is it prudent for us, or do we include as a part of our motion if we so choose to recommend that the governing body review that section for clarity, or do they know to do that on their own?
It's my understanding that the plan for the governing body is to modify the part of the municipal code on licensing, basically to hang tight with you folks and let them do what they need to do on licensure.
Okay.
So just to clarify, when we take your committee recommendation to them, that's when we would say, you know, you would like them to amend that section.
Anything else, Brad?
No.
Keith?
The only thing I want to say, so I appreciate staff pulling all these comparables there, it helps a lot. And what I see for Overland Park, when we began this discussion, I brought it up the first time, that's my expectation, is allows them to operate this as a home business. It also has terminology in there, allows to visit clients' homes. So that, if we move to a motion, that's what I want the motion to be, in phrasing and how that needs to be built as the motion, that's where I want us to end up. Again, if I'm on an island, I'm on an island, but that's my desire. So I may need phrasing and help. I think that's where we end up here, but I don't know for certain if that matches what we want it to be. I guess so, building the resolution to move on to the governing body and phrasing in such a way to match the Overland Park is where I lie, and what I want to.
Okay. Real quick, I kind of want to get a feel for Brad, because he just asked a clarifying question. Where are you kind of feeling, Brad, are you?
I agree with Hayes.
You're kind of feeling like you agree with Hayes. Okay, all right. Tori?
I would agree. I'd actually circled it, mined through it, the Overland Park one. That's how, this, I mean, I know that we have a suggested motion, but it's kind of gray and foggy, I think. I think Overland Park's really.
You feel like there's what?
Is more succinct and exactly tells us what.
I guess, that's the only question I have for staff, is this language from the Overland Park Municipal Code, does that fall under the land development code, or does that fall under the Gardner Municipal Code? under the Gardner Municipal Code? Section 15.
That's language that would, that you would suggest they incorporate into chapter 5.15.
Okay.
But if you're, if you're wanting to make a more specific recommendation, probably you could change that reason number two that's listed here, and, and say, besides other potential negative impacts pertaining, you know, to massage impacts that you want addressed and changes to chapter 515, you'd also like them to consider Overland Park's licensure or something like that.
Well, and, and this is where I'm going to lean on staff, and if I'm missing it, please let me know. Do we, I, I don't want to send texts to them to deny, I'd prefer to send texts to them that has the approval of the planning commission and ask that they consider, that's why I'm getting lost in the terminology. It says, you know, the planning commission recommends that the governing body deny the following text amendments. Haven't we already sent that to them, so do we, do we need to do this in two parts?
Yes, you do. You need to readdress that original recommendation that you sent to them.
Okay.
Because they sent it back for you to reconsider.
Okay.
So you have to address that again, and then.
And that's, that, that would be a simple motion, just as it's phrased here, so maybe, Madam Chair, if it's okay, may we knock that out first, and then move on to the second part of what needs to be done?
So statute says you have two choices, you can resubmit your original recommendation and give them the reasons why.
Okay.
You're submitting that original recommendation, or you can amend it and do a new recommendation.
So would we be best served then to amend it, and amend item two, to reflect the terminology used in the Overland Park Municipal Code, and ask that they review that for update?
Well, that's not.
Not same thing?
Not amendment to the Land Development Code, which you have authority over, it's, but you could amend your committee recommendation to say, okay, we want you to deny this original recommendation, and we want to recommend that you also amend chapter 5.15 of Gardner Municipal Code to reflect.
Yeah, I got you.
So that can be in the same motion, or does it need to be two separate?
I think so. Michelle, you think so?
Sorry, I was pressing with the microphone.
It's all right.
Technology. How about City Attorney, what's your opinion?
Well, I guess I'm torn here, because.
Part of me is thinking that this is best resolved by the governing body, since it's a municipal code issue.
Right.
So your question is, two separate?
Well.
Do we have to make two separate motions, or can we just amend the motion here and just make one motion? Is that right, Hee?
Well.
Two motions or one?
I apologize, I forgot.
Teresa.
That's what I was going to say, you just beat me to it. Based on what you just shared, perhaps we really aren't in a position where we can actually suggest a recommendation of an adjustment to the municipal code at all, that's not planning commission's authority, and we need to leave, although our desires might be to match something close to Overland Park, we don't really have any grounds other than me saying I like that idea to do anything to the governing body in that regard, is that, am I right?
I mean, that's my understanding of legal.
So maybe we just need to address the way it has been in the recommended motion, and perhaps governing body will take the time to review the notes, also see our presentation, and see that that's our desire. Is that, is that wrapping up all right, Teresa?
Yeah, I think so.
I had it a second time. Okay.
Okay, oh wait, we have more questions?
Oh, I was just going to say that the reason number three, even though it might seem a little bit fuzzy, was the one that's meant to be sending the message to them that you would like them to modify chapter 5.15 to allow them as home occupations if they meet, you know, so that, you know, it could be enabled in the Land Development Code that way.
Okay.
And you're basically telling me you are fine with massage businesses being home occupations if they meet the standards for home occupations?
Yes.
And you want them to treat them as other similar uses, so.
I'm going to have to disagree. I'll be the island this time. Okay, did, did everyone down here get their opinions and?
Yeah, I just.
Thoughts?
You know, I think data should drive decisions whenever possible, and from my here from staff, we have no data that says that in-home massage therapists decrease the property value of the neighborhood. We have no data to support that.
That would be correct at this time, yes sir.
And then do we have any data that shows that the city entities that have, do allow it, that they have had any types of problems and complications? Law violations, regrets that they have made the decision they had made to allow it?
We're not aware of any negative connotations for those cities that are allowing home occupations to be as a massage therapist at this time. I mean, we could do additional research for that for the city council, but we.
Well, I think as we look for reasons to tell the city council why we supported this, we can tell them we have no data to say that it backfired on cities that did allow it, we have no data that says it decreased property values.
Tori, anything else to add? Go on the right side?
Yep.
Okay. If everyone is comfortable, I will entertain a motion on this item.
The planning commission recommends that the governing body deny the following text amendment to the Gardner Land Development Code. The addition of item F, massage businesses and similar uses, to the list of prohibited as home occupations in all districts, for the following reasons. Item one, the planning commission finds that the current adopted standards for home occupations in the Gardner Land Development Code are sufficient to address lightly, likely, external impacts of home occupations in residential neighborhoods, and, item two, any other potential negative impacts pertaining specifically to massage establishments as home occupations should be addressed in chapter 5.15 of the Gardner Municipal Code pertaining to permitting and licensing of massage establishments and therapists, and, item three, pending amendment of chapter 5.15 of the Gardner Municipal Code to clarify the conditions under which massage businesses may be permitted as home occupations. Massage businesses will be processed in the same manner as other home occupations, therefore allowing uses with similar impacts to the similarly regulated under the Gardner Land Development Code.
Okay, we have a motion made by Freeman with a, second by Austin, that the planning commission recommends the governing body deny the following text amendments to the Gardner Land Development Code for the following reasons. Item one, the planning commission finds that the current adopted standards for home occupations in the Gardner Land Development Code are sufficient to address likely external impacts of home occupations in residential neighborhoods, and, two, any other potential negative impacts pertaining to, pertaining specifically to massage establishments as home occupations should be addressed in chapter 5.15 of the Gardner Municipal Code pertaining to permitting and licensing of massage, massage establishments and therapists, and, three, pending amendment of chapter 5.15 of the Gardner Municipal Code to clarify the conditions under which massage businesses may be permitted as home occupations. Massage businesses will be processed in the same manner as other home occupations, therefore allowing uses with similar impacts to be similarly regulated under the Gardner Land Development Code. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on. Item 3C, TA-17-02, hold a public hearing and consider text amendments to section 17.05 to clarify and review approval processes for land uses. Do we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, we do. This amendment was initiated also in October of last year to ensure that review processes and standards are consistent in language and approach. So, this would indicate which uses require approval by staff upon review of appropriate documents. Also, it clarifies that all uses shall comply with all other local, state, and federal regulations pertinent to the activity pursued when proof is required. So I'm just going to show you the proposed amendments, what they would look like if you changed them. The first one is just general requirements for all the uses, and this is to clarify, to add a new provision that would clarify that all uses of land, building, and structures in the city are subject to all other applicable provisions of the City of Gardner Municipal Code. So that clarifies, you know, here's this code, here's the other parts of our municipal code, those have to be, they have to meet all those provisions, and they also have to meet other applicable local, state, and federal regulations that are pertinent to that activity. And this, this is true whether or not we specifically cross-reference those things in our code, and also that we may require them to provide proof of compliance as part of the permitting process. It's a pretty standard requirement, just wasn't in our code and wasn't in our former code either. Also, changes to several accessory uses, we've already fixed some of them in other amendments, so this is just cleaning up and making them all consistent with each other. So this is revised language in the opening paragraph to just say that the use will go through an approval process by the Business Economic Development Director or designee, and will be approved after they're found in accordance with the following standards. And then changing the first standard to read the same as some of our other ones, instead of saying they'll be licensed in the state of Kansas and comply with all applicable regulations, we would like to say that they have to provide evidence of any applicable license certification or registration that would be required by a state or federal, federal agency. So they would actually need to submit proof of that along with their getting a permit for their in-home daycare. Second one, for accessory home occupations, we've already amended those to have the opening paragraph read just like the one I just went through. So that's, you've already gone through that, but this is adding an additional standard to say that the owner occup, operator of that home occupation needs to provide that same evidence, because we don't currently require that, so there, there could be home occupations that require other approvals from other agencies. This is pretty much the same thing, food and beverage, accessory outdoor, change that beginning paragraph, and then also ask them to provide evidence of their licenses that they need to, to obtain for the food and beverage operation. And then, permanent cargo containers, this is just to clarify that they do need to submit a plot plan and, and get approval for those. And the reason that most of these that I'm talking to you about are accessory uses, is that sometimes those are things that wouldn't necessarily be picked up, like with a building permit review, where they're already applying for that, and then we would review it. So this just makes sure that they do get reviewed and these standards do get enforced. And then we have one, one more, as for daycare centers, we don't, we didn't recommend that you change the introductory paragraph, because these are just principal uses that are always going to be reviewed, you know, for building permits or for uses when they change use, so, but we do want the owner-operator to have to provide evidence of those other licenses. So our recommendation is that you approve this, this amendment as presented. The motion also states that if you want to make any changes, you can also use this recommendation, say as presented in the July 25th, 2017 staff report, with the following changes, if you have any changes. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks Kelly. Since this is a public hearing item, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Individuals will be allowed a three minutes, and those representing a group will get five minutes. Not seeing anybody come forward, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Brady with a, second by Austin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, questions for staff, seemed like it cleaned things up, but any questions? Now's your time. Okay? Doesn't look like we have any changes, looks like a good update, I would entertain a motion on this item.
A move that we recommend that the governing body approve TA-17-02, a text amendment pertaining to section 17.05 of the Gardner Land Development Code to clarify, review, and approval processes for various land uses as presented in the July 25th, 2017 staff report.
Second.
Motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman, that the planning commission recommends that the governing body approve TA-17-02, a text amendment pertaining to section 17.05 of the Gardner Land Development Code to clarify, review, and approval processes for various land uses as presented in the July 25th, 2017 staff report. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Okay, we have one discussion item this evening. Item one, Gardner Main Street Corridor Plan Update. Quick presentation on this?
Yes, we do have a presentation. I have pictures for you.
Yes.
Okay, so just to catch you up on what's been happening with the project, we had our charcutt, two-day charcutt process. The day one, the consultants met with the steering committee for a three-hour work session. They divided, well, the first day did a market research finding presentation, then they divided the participants into two groups. One group was to study options if the fairgrounds were moved elsewhere, so they, they talked about where might the fairgrounds go, and how might the current property be reused if those fairgrounds were moved. The other group studied options if the fairgrounds stayed in the current location and were improved for greater use, what changes might be made. And so the reason they did this is because pretty much, there's so many things that depend on, on that one decision, and they want to get the feel of the community for, you know, one way or the other, and I, I think their conclusion at the end of it was, there wasn't as much compelling ideas coming forward for if we moved it, what else could we do, there wasn't a burning, you know, vision for something else there, but a lot of people definitely had ideas about how we could utilize those facilities better with perhaps some partnerships. So they headed down that direction with their visualizations, they worked on those all day, one day, and the next day, they had the steering committee come in at lunch the second day to look at their ideas before they presented them to the public, and then we had an open house from 5:00 to 8:00 on the evening of the second day. So, I want to show you their ideas. The downtown core, they visualized three different options, so just to show you kind of what we're talking about. In this picture, north is to the right, the fairgrounds property is shown in green, the yellow areas show the downtown focus areas, and this would include the east side area that's around that center Main Street intersection, which also includes City Hall. There's two other city properties, including the Parks and Rec Building and the Water Tower property, those are the other two yellow boxes, and the area in that blue outline is the vacant Catholic Church property, and then the red arrows are on Elm Street. So you feeling kind of oriented now, or, okay. This is just a kind of a different view of those areas, the Catholic Church at the bottom, the City Hall in the middle of the yellow box, the bank across the street, and the Gardner Pharmacy parking lot. And that one off to the right is that Quonset Building, that's basically a parking, parking building right now, it looks like that, top picture, and then the water tower, current water tower location. Okay, so this is visualization number one, I'm sorry that the writing is kind of unclear on this one, but I'll explain to you kind of the big ideas on this one. This would be fairgrounds to remain where they are, but to expand to include those parcels that are north of the aquatic. but to expand to include those parcels that are north of the Aquatic Center, up Center Street to Madison. And then build a new community center adjacent to the Aquatic Center. They envision a heavy landscape buffer between the Aquatic Center, Community Center, and the fairgrounds. So that's what all those little green circles are. And they envisioned utilizing that front yard of the fairgrounds, which is basically that Elm Street corridor, kind of adjacent to Cornerstone Park, as a farmer's market when the fair is not open, and that's kind of currently what's happening. And then creating new maintenance provided homes south of Cornerstone Park. So, you know, that could take several different, like maybe they'd be row houses or condos or something, or maybe it would be garden apartments. And then create new parking lots on the underutilized properties along Shawnee Street north of City Hall. And then creating a new gateway park. Do you see that? Oh, I think I'm on the wrong, I'm sorry. I can't get it to go back. There we go. Sorry, I was in the wrong image. Okay, see the gateway park kind of off to your left at the intersection of Center and Main? So that's right next to the bank where they have some parking. But there's a big grassy area there already. And then a new building to infill the area between the Gardner Pharmacy and the bank. So I think they saw that as a missing tooth in the whole downtown Main Street corridor area. But that's why they recommended putting more parking in behind the buildings there. So like kind of where that chiropractic office is, next to the Gardner Senior Center, that area along there. So that's East Park Street that I'm talking about there. And then turning the vacant Catholic Church facility into a destination event facility. And turning the water tower location into a park. So that's, that's their kind of visualization number one. And what I want to do, and then what they're going to do is put these visualizations into a survey on the web, website so that people that weren't at the meeting can also come and make comments on them. And, and so we'll send you a link to these drawings so you can look at them a little more clearly. But I just wanted to kind of introduce them to you and let you start thinking about them. Okay, so in this one, just to reiterate, the community center would go in next to the Aquatic Center. They're kind of proposing a bigger building at the fairgrounds facility there, kind of a combined facility. Okay, going on to the next one. Little bit different. Fairgrounds remain, it'd be revamped with a new multipurpose buildings and landscape screening between the Aquatic Center and the fairgrounds. Then at the terminus of Elm Street is where the new community center would be, adjacent to the Aquatic Center and Cornerstone Park. The multipurpose community center would be a collaboration between the city, the fair board, and the school district to educate, inspire, and grow, and grow the community. They envision holding the farmer's market in front of that new community center. And then north of the community center, they are showing a new large fair building to replace the existing three buildings. And building a new greenhouse to be utilized by the fairgrounds. They were talking about schoolchildren possibly being able to come over and grow things in the greenhouse. So that would be flanking a new fairground gateway and a rival plaza. And then behind City Hall, you see where that narrow strip of green is behind City Hall? That would be a new public green with adjacent on-street parking on both sides. And then purchase more property for parking behind City Hall. Infill with gateway buildings on the north side of the public green. So those are the larger buildings that you see along Center Street there. Also an infill building again, you know, between the Gardner Pharmacy and the bank. And then turning the iconic Park and Rec Building into a destination restaurant, great idea. And the vacant Catholic Church would become event space, but not the community center, just event space. Okay, and option C. And this one, see that narrow green across the center of the drawing? That is around City Hall. So City Hall would be the central focal point. Create new community spaces. The one to the south, which is to your left, would be a community green. It would have parking on both sides. And then the one on the north would be a festival green that ends at Cornerstone Park, again with parking on most of it, both sides. At the northern terminus of the green, build a combination community building, fairgrounds co-op building. North Elm would be the new gateway arrival feature for the fairgrounds. And it says that it features an extended tree grid as stalls for farmer's market. That's those kind of double rows of trees there. And then they've envisioned some potential office, retail, or residential infill between the north end of the green and the fairgrounds. And then across the street adjacent to the church. And then infill buildings on the west side of the green, south of Cornerstone Park. And then to the left, the south side of the community green, running between the, would terminate in a new community center, mid-block Park Street. So that would be a redevelopment project. The vacant church property would be used for additional public space. It would be a public-private partnership, offering community theater, performance stage, movie theater, or space for events like weddings and corporate gatherings. And that other building there that's associated with the church, they're saying possibly being a teen center or some other community space. The south end of Elm Street would terminate in a railroad overlook and potentially become a future bike pedestrian connection across the railroad tracks. So then they picture the Park and Rec Building being a brewery or a destination restaurant. And the water tower being a gateway park, keeping the water tower structure with Gardner identity elements placed on the water tower. Or maybe public art, something like that. So I don't know if you want to discuss these or just you want me to disintroduce them, but they've got ideas also for the east gateway, the west gateway, and some traffic things. You want me to just keep moving along?
Can I just keep seeing them?
Oh, one quick question, and maybe I've missed the memo on this, but when I think of the Main Street Corridor, it goes more than two blocks.
Oh yeah, yeah, it does. This is ju, this was just a focal area for the charrette.
Did you have something?
I see $120 million on this page here, so I'm not sure what we're looking at really, I'm not sure.
Right, this is the beginning.
I don't know what we're doing here.
Right. This is let your brain run wild, what would we really love to have? And later we figure out how to do it.
I don't, okay.
I mean, it's fun to pretend, but I mean, they're planning on, they're planning on using land that are privately owned by people. Like is Sam going to give up his parking lot at Gardner Pharmacy? I don't know, he already has parking issues. I know, I mean, these are great ideas, but.
I'm not sure.
Are Blazers, are we going to tear down Blazers for this new building? I don't know, there's just lots of stuff that.
Right.
Seems very interesting.
Right, and they are going to work with property owners too, like of catalytic type properties to help them see what they might want to do and try to incorporate that into plan. And this is just the first sweep of, let's talk to the community about what they might want to do.
Are even the land on the side of the, of the bank, isn't that their land? Do they want to turn it into a park? I don't know, it just seems very interesting.
Well, obviously the city would have to purchase, yeah, the land for the park. Unless they want to donate it. I mean, right now it has three flagpoles, right? So, you know, they might be interested in creating a gathering area, which would attract attention to their bank.
I think these are very creative, I just, I like seeing them. I just, there's lots of questions and lots of hurdles, I would think.
Understood.
So is this something you guys want to keep, keep viewing? Or I know it's getting, you know, we're quartered till nine. Kelly said she can send them out. I'll just kind of go with consensus. Do you guys want her to keep going or are you guys just kind of done for the night? This is just a discussion item, we're not taking action.
I'm good with whatever.
I really just don't understand what, what our input will accomplish with it. That's where I'm stuck with it. It's part of the whole process of the Main Street Corridor Plan that the councils pay for. I don't know what our input would be. Yes, they're wonderful ideas, no, we could never pay for them. And it is a fun dream, but you've got so many landowners in place where.
Well, what they're hoping is to get some consensus direction eventually through these. They got another public meeting coming up later where they can further refine it. But they are intending to come up with an action plan. It's not going to just be a dream, it is going to be an action plan. So they'll try to figure out which is doable. So.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a beginning.
I apologize, I don't mean to be dismissive, but doable is, is going to be the biggest quotation marks I've ever seen on a, on a phrase when we look at what these plans are. I would love it with all my heart, but.
Yeah, it would be cool, right?
If you have them up real quick, Kelly, I think we can take a few minutes. Yeah, go ahead and keep going through them, I mean.
Okay. The next one's for the eastern gateway area. The focal area that they chose is this area right here. Is bounded by the railroad tracks to the south, South Mulberry on the west, East Shawnee Street on the north, and then that empty parcel in the vicinity of Quick Trip there in the east. Okay. Does another look at it? Okay, from left to right, starting on the south of Main, they're showing on the side of the existing mobile home park, converting that to business park flex space. Next would be a mixed-use development of commercial and residential uses. So, you know, potentially some of those mobile home park residents could move into the housing that's above the commercial right next door. And then that ends in a, then there's like inline commercial, which maybe you call it strip commercial, I don't know. But ending in that blue V shape is a gateway welcome feature that could include like a welcome center and a sign. And then left to right, north of Main would be horizontally attached single-family homes, like row houses with a clubhouse. Then some inline commercial again, next to Quick Trip as an infill. And then the community center located behind Quick Trip, adjacent to the development that's next to Price Shopper. So their, what their, what their purpose was at this meeting was to kind of draw up these ideas and then, see that red dot there? That was, they gave people green dots and red dots. And they wanted people to go around and say, red dots, I don't like this idea. Green dots, I do kind of like this idea. So they were trying to, to narrow things down a little bit. Same location, but right to left, right to left, south of Main, starting at the welcome center and gateway element. Inline commercial with parking in the rear. Replace the mobile home park with a senior housing development. Infill row houses between Gardner Pharmacy and the bank. Remember then that they had talked about that new linear greenway feature having parking on both sides? So there'd still be public parking. And then right to left, north of Main, a commercial pad site and restaurant development. New large commercial north of Quick Trip. Inline commercial towards the rear of lots with trees along the sidewalk. I think that's because that's a big long strip with no trees. It's pretty hard to really walk through in weather like this. And then a gathering space at the water tower. Okay. Moving on to the western gateway. This one is more to do with transportation aspects and streetscape. So it's bounded on Waverly, by Waverly on the west, runs along east, West Santa Fe Street to the intersection with Main Street. So this is their illustration. If you see the letter A on the right, that is a bike boulevard on Warren Street, which is parallel to Main Street with access across Main Street via Meadowbrook Drive, which would be a mid-block crossing. Option B, they're, they're showing that same bike boulevard, but now it would cross Main Street at a new realigned intersection that would involve Poplar, Main Street, and Santa Fe. That's in that red circle, red dotted circle. And then item C, you see that off to the right? That would be having bike lanes on Main Street. So they would utilize the existing right-of-way on Main Street, reduce Main Street from four lanes down to three lanes to put bike lanes on both sides. Or utilize a two-way consolidated bike lane on one side. So those are things they want people to think about. Some other ideas that are in this plan, providing bike amenities at Meadowbrook Park, like bike racks, maybe bike repair stations, something like that. Realign the roadways for the western gateway that I talked about earlier. That would add some green space seating, maybe memorial or signage at that western gateway location. An enhanced streetscape down Santa Fe with shared bike pedestrian lane. And then they're showing a possible new commercial development at Waverly and Santa Fe. Grocery store, bank, gas station, retail. And they're putting greenway, or green space there in the front to kind of draw that bike and pedestrian traffic and let them have access to the retail. Okay, then we had some little exercises on a vacant piece of property in the middle of town to say, what if we visualize sports tourism here? This is the parcel. It's not currently in the city, I don't think, right? And so it's bounded by the Center Street on the west, railroad tracks to the north, residential on the east and south, and also schools on the south. So this visualization shows two connections across the tracks. The red, the one in red, I think is just supposed to be bicycle and pedestrian access. That leads to the multipurpose sports fields on the west. And the indoor multipurpose field house in the center. And then those kind of like stripes on the right side is a solar farm. So parking is adjacent to the schools. And one of the questions I had was, could the solar farm run on the north side along the tracks as maybe a buffer area, you know, where it's noisy? And then, or maybe make the solar farm a shade structure over the parking? Oops. Okay, and this is the, the second one. They, they're showing that same bike pedestrian connection to downtown. It says it's a sculptural pedestrian bridge, so I'm not sure what that is. But then an outdoor amphitheater and a multipurpose sports fields, destination playground on the right, parking adjacent to the school. I think that's a community center there, the brown building in the bottom. And then, then again, you know, can we reverse it? Put the parking next to the tracks, but the fields closer to the schools? That's just an idea. Okay. This is not property the city owns, but this is a what if we want to have sports tourism as an income revenue source for the community.
Has another, all the ideas to be discussed and other factors considered there is proximity of large gatherings of people to railway hauling hazardous materials.
Hauling what?
Potentially hazardous materials.
Oh.
Trade derails right there during the ball tournament. Is that really where we want the ball fields to be?
Yeah, that's a good consideration. Okay. These are just some traffic visualization opportunities. They were focused on the pedestrian bridge over here on Center, South Center, and how narrow that is for people that are walking or riding bikes. And so what they were talking about is reducing the auto lane width to like 11 or 12 feet. And then that would accommodate an eight-to-10-foot pedestrian or bike access lane. So it'd be basically putting the road on a diet and making more room for pedestrians and bicycles, but it would still have access. We wouldn't have to rebuild the bridge or anything. These are some different options for Main Street reconfiguration. Again, there's only one of them that reconfigures the roadway, and that's the angle parking shown on the bottom right, which would take some of the sidewalk away. You can see a lot of. You can see a lot of people didn't really like that idea. The option number one that you see is to reduce the parallel parking width and still have two 11-foot travel lanes and put in a 10-foot center landscape median that would slow traffic. That seemed to be the most popular option with people. The second one is reduce parallel parking width, have two 12-foot travel lanes, and then have a four-foot median to provide for mid-block crossings. So it'd be kind of a pedestrian refuge kind of thing.
When they did this part of the exercise, was there any consideration that this is a state highway and that KDOT would be involved?
Right.
That they aren't going to tree line the middle of one of their state byways?
Well, we already had a meeting with KDOT, a phone conversation with them. They said, propose what you want and we'll consider it. So they're, they already know that we're looking at different things like this. This is an example of a pedestrian bridge. They said it's a pretty expensive option because you do have to cover the whole thing so people don't jump off the bridge. But people love the idea of having a pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks. And then they just explored some different traffic calming methods. People didn't like roundabouts for whatever reason, and they did like the median idea, So that was, that was all that really happened at the meeting. They were just trying to get a feel from the community of what might be acceptable and not be acceptable, where they go. I mean, they've got to plan something, right? And so the next meeting is going to be in October, I believe, the public meeting, where they'll have these ideas refined a little bit more. They're going to be talking to property owners, they're going to be talking to, finishing up their market research and doing some more technical analysis of costs and everything, so.
Thanks, Kelly. I know I attended the public meeting. It was, it was fun to go through the different items they had out with the dots and, I mean, granted, I understand the cost, right? It's not all their land, but it was, it was a good exercise. Thanks for presenting that this evening. Anybody have a comment on what Kelly shared with us? Okay. If we don't have anything else for this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Freeman with a second by Austin. All those in favor, please nick it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Needs adjourned. Everybody in favor.